No sense in sitting all the way back there. Good evening, I'm Dan Saltzman, Chair of the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance. It's the BNA. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Brookline, Town Meeting Members Association, and the BNA, I want to welcome you to tonight's Warren Article Forum. If you've had your ear to the political pavement in Brookline, you might think that we're only here to argue over leaf blowers.[23.82][23.82](Laughter). But, of course, there's much more at stake at town meeting. Tonight, we're going to discuss, of course, we're going to discuss Article 10, the proposed ban on leaf blowers, and Article 11, which is the proposed expansion of leaf blowers, use of leaf blowers. But we'll also discuss two other very salient topics. We're going to take up Article 16. This relates to high-stakes use of standardized testing in Massachusetts schools. We'll also debate the merits of Article 6, the official designation of most of Lars Anderson Park as open space under Massachusetts law. Combined, these articles showcase Brookline's leadership in municipal policy. They display the unique characteristics and parameters that we work in in Brookline to operate the town. Articles 6 and 10 are really the epitome of how Brookline is so often on the forefront of public policy. Like the Olympics and bottled water, for example, two other issues that were taken up by Brookline recently. Leaf blowers and high-stakes testing affect areas far beyond Brookline, of course. And Brookline's voice in these issues will be heard far beyond our borders. Articles 10 and 16 exemplify the difficulty that we have as a dense urban town. It's a town where noise can be more bothersome to neighbors, and parks and open space ironically don't grow on trees. But we must be cognizant of the vital importance of these issues, and we have to respect it. That means that at tonight's forum, as with every other forum that we have, there'll be no personal attacks. There's been some bitter things that have gone back and forth on some emails, the TMA, TMMA list, and we're not going to tolerate any of that tonight. No ad hominem attacks, nothing like that, none of those remarks. So, we're going to stick to the facts and the opinions of those facts, and we're not going to call into question the people who are speaking them. So, that warning aside, tonight, we're going to learn about these issues. I'm looking forward to that, I'm sure that you are. And I'll get to the ground rules of the evening. So, we have, there'll be seven minutes for opening statements, and the proponent will go first. Then, we'll take up about 10 to 15 minutes of Q and A, maybe a little bit more, depending on how it goes. If you do have a question, you'll go to the podium, you'll introduce yourself, and a question has to be a question. We're not going to have statements. If you can't figure out how to phrase it as a question, then you really don't have a question.[161.37][161.37](Laughter). So, we'll wrap up each article with closing remarks that are going to be no longer than five minutes, and the opponent will start off, and the proponent of the article will have the last word. So, finally, again, I'd like to thank you for coming and listening and participating, and I'm going to hand it off to our moderator, Margaret Bush, of the League of Women Voters of Brookline.
Hi. Welcome to everybody tonight to this forum. It's one that the League of Women Voters of Brookline is very pleased to be co-sponsoring and participating in, and we hope that people who are watching and people who are here in the audience tonight will also look at the website of the Brookline League of Women Voters. We have several programs coming up this fall. With that, we're about to get started. Some of you in the audience will be joining me up here to ask your questions, and just to reiterate what was said, we'll be on a tight time schedule. We have a timekeeper sitting in the front row who will remind all of us when we're running out of time. And it's especially important that those of you who are asking questions will be very timely and watch your time and be very succinct about the questions that you're asking. The time will be short. So, with that, we're going to begin with Article 16, and Dan will be indicating who's to speak first.
Okay. So, Article 16, just a quick intro. It's a resolution calling on state and federal officials to immediately adopt a moratorium on all high-stakes use of standardized tests. So, speaking for the article is Lisa Guisbond, who's sitting next to me here, and she will start it out. And speaking against it is Dick Benka.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening.[274.33][274.33](Laughter). Good. I am Lisa Guisbond. I'm a Brookline resident, a public school parent, and I'm also the Executive Director of Citizens for Public Schools. It's a public education advocacy organization. And I'm going to start with a story. A businessman once asked a teacher to give him a bottom-line answer to this question: "What is the one single thing that would solve all of our problems in public schools?" The teacher said, "That's easy. What we need are fewer people who believe that there's one single thing that would solve all of our problems in public schools." It's understandable why people who aren't in the classroom every day or don't have children in school these days could get the impression that there is a silver bullet answer to public school problems, especially problems in urban public schools, and that that answer is, that silver bullet answer is high-stakes testing. But we've actually been trying that experiment for at least 15 years here in Massachusetts and around the country, and we're seeing that not only does the silver bullet not solve all of our problems, but it's actually damaging a lot of the things that most people really value about public schools. So, I think it's time for Brookline to go on record, as a number of other communities have in recent weeks and months, in support of this moratorium on the high-stakes uses of standardized tests in our schools. And by high stakes, what we mean is the use of test results to determine high school graduation, teacher evaluation, and school and district performance. This resolution does not call for a moratorium on testing, just the high-stakes uses of the test results. We would still be able to look at student test results as one piece of evidence of how students are doing in school, and we could also still look at the results to compare different groups of students to see, you know, what's the size of our achievement gap, whether it's growing, or nowing, or staying the same. And Brookline would be joining a diverse group of 12 other communities that feel the focus on testing has simply gone too far and is harming the quality of teaching and learning in classrooms across the Commonwealth.[418.12][418.12](Laughter). The Massachusetts Association of School Committees Delegate Assembly also voted last week by a vote of 66 to 42 in favor of this moratorium. Now, this is a very critical moment for these kinds of decisions. The State Board of Ed is poised to decide this month whether to move to a different test called PARK, or stick with the one we have, MCAS. The Massachusetts Education Commissioner, Mitchell Chester, has, in the past few weeks, introduced the idea of another route we could take. He called it MCAS 2.0, and it's unclear what he means by that, whether he's talking about some kind of a hybrid between the test we have and the new test, or PARK by another name, or something else entirely. It's really not clear. There was a study just released by a group called Mathematica that shows that neither MCAS nor the new test PARK works well as an assessment of readiness for college, probably because these tests only measure a narrow slice of the kinds of knowledge and skills that students need to be successful in college. And this Mathematica study showed that neither test predicts more than 5 to 18 percent of the variation in college grades in these subjects. So, let me ask you this: if a doctor gave you a choice of two drugs that only had a 5 to 18 percent chance of making you feel better, would you be excited about taking them? Even the President of the United States has recently acknowledged that there's too much testing going on in our schools, and that his own high-stakes policies have contributed and exacerbated the problem. Now, opponents of this initiative say that a moratorium doesn't matter so much here in Brookline, where students often pass without too much trouble, but they're more concerned about other communities that still struggle, like communities like Boston. But at the Brookline School Committee public hearing, a group of 15 teachers, parents, and a student spoke eloquently and with great specificity about the damaging consequences of high-stakes testing right here in Brookline, where it's narrowing our curriculum, pushing out other important kinds of learning, ratcheting up anxiety. And one special ed teacher at the high school talked about how it has the effect of segregating special education students of color in order to prep them more directly to pass the MCAS. On the other hand, parents, teachers, and political leaders in Boston beg to differ with the argument that this kind of testing is an avenue toward greater equity in educational opportunity. Boston City Councilor Tito Jackson, who happens to be a graduate of Brookline High School through the MEKO program, recently introduced a similar resolution to the Boston City Council, where it was passed unanimously. What is clear is that we are entering a period of uncertainty about testing, but we know that testing has not been that silver bullet here in Brookline or in places like Boston. And I think that makes it even more urgent, and that makes this the ideal moment to advocate for this moratorium. We need to think about what are better ways to prepare our students for successful lives after high school, in college and career, and as participants in our democracy. Thank you.[651.16][651.16](Applause).
Thank you.[653.16][653.16](Applause). We'll hand it over to Dick.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm Dick Benka, a former selectman, and I will say that Lisa and I have never had any ad hominem personal interchange. I think we differ strongly about policy issues, and that's what we've been discussing. I'm not going to talk about Brookline. What I want to focus on is the real damage that Article 16 could do to minority and low-income students in Boston and other urban districts. Just some quick background to give you the source of my concerns. During my last four years before I retired as a practicing attorney, I volunteered in the regular Boston District Schools. Three of those years were in the most challenged, in two of the most challenged middle schools in the Boston system, the Timbaulty and the Dearborn Schools. When I retired, I passed the state certification exam as a middle school math teacher, and for the last 10 years, I've been volunteering at a charter public school in Boston. I first taught eighth grade math. Now, I'm volunteering three to four days a week, working in the classroom with new teachers, and focusing on middle school students who are struggling with math in the classroom, in pull-out groups, after school, and on Saturdays. House Bill 340, which Article 16 endorses, would apply not just in Brookline. It would impose a statewide moratorium regardless of how badly a school district was failing its students. It would eliminate, as a high school graduation requirement, any use of any standardized test to demonstrate mastery of, quote, "skills, competency, and knowledge." The Department of Education could not use achievement or growth measured by any standardized test, quote, "for the purpose of assessing the performance of any public school or school district," unquote. Let's talk about what that would mean for low-income and minority kids in urban districts. There's presently no competency or mastery requirement in the elementary or middle school grades in Massachusetts, and there's a real travesty of, in these grades, of children being promoted without even a minimal mastery of material. At the Timbaulty and Dearborn Schools, I saw kids still doing addition on their fingers in the eighth grade, passing around photos and socializing during class without any intervention from the teacher, being sent out of class for fighting and being back in class five minutes later, and basically a lack of expectations for the kids. The charter school where I've been volunteering for the last 10 years starts in the sixth grade, with its students coming largely from the Boston District Schools. About 40 percent of the kids have been passed through to the sixth grade with below-grade level reading skills. Two-thirds of the kids have been passed through to the sixth grade with below-grade level math skills. Half of those, or about one-third of the kids, have been passed through with second and third grade math skills. A member of the advisory committee, who headed a charter school in Boston that began in the ninth grade, told of kids being promoted to the ninth grade with fifth grade skills. These are not aberrations. In 2014, 30 percent of the kids in the fifth and eighth grade in the Boston District Schools had warning or failing scores on the math MCAS. That meant that they couldn't do even simple grade-level problems. Yet, 98 to 99 percent of them were promoted without mastering grade-level materials. There's only one test that protects kids from a lack of expectations by requiring that schools provide some basic level of competency, and that's the test taken in the 10th grade and required for high school graduation. That would be scrapped for three years by House Bill 340, with nothing put in its place and no specification of what happens when the moratorium ends. What would that mean? Let's focus on the math test, with which I'm most familiar and which has proven to be the most challenging MCAS test. Even that test assumes only a basic level of competency. The MCAS math test is first taken in the 10th grade, with four more chances to pass by the end of 12th grade. It is equivalent to a good eighth-grade math course. That was first pointed out to me by the head of middle school math for the Boston Public Schools, and recently confirmed by a member of the Brookline School Committee. And I reviewed the 2014 MCAS math exam. Students in the school where I'm volunteering have seen everything on that test by the eighth grade. I suspect that the same, if not more, is true for the Brookline schools. That's not to say that eighth graders would answer every question correctly, but to graduate with a proficiency plan determined by the school district need to get only 17 out of 60 points by the end of 12th grade. For children with cognitive impairments, there's an MCAS alt using portfolios. And there's an appeals process for children who can't pass the MCAS. It looks at coursework, transcripts, attendance, and tutoring and academic support. Over the last several years, no Brookline students has failed to graduate from high school because of MCAS. Article 16 asserts that low-income, special needs, English language learners, and children of color are negatively affected by standardized testing. The data shows that is simply not the case. You have a handout, and if you don't have one, there are some in the back of the room. MCAS has put a spotlight on these children. It's put a spotlight on achievement gaps. There are last expectations for kids, and they're rising to those expectations. Look at the data: declining dropout rates, rising graduation rates, rising college enrollment rates, reductions in the gaps in these measures, and the improvement has been most dramatic in an urban district like Boston. All of this progress would be undercut by a moratorium. Parents and guardians would be deprived of objective information assessing school performance and showing what the schools are or are not doing for their kids. That information is most critical for those who can't afford to send their kids to parochial or private schools, or who can't afford to move to Brookline. Districts like Boston, without the high school graduation requirement, could send kids into a competitive, knowledge-based world without even meeting a minimal benchmark of basic skills. A moratorium is not necessary for any study to proceed. A moratorium would switch off an important spotlight on school performance with no substitute put in place, in its place, and that is just plain wrong. Thank you.[1112.58][1112.58](Applause).
Thank you, Dick.[1114.58][1114.58](Applause). Okay, so, we're going to open it up for questions. If anybody would like to speak, please go to the podium. No questions about it. Oh, here we go.[1128.01][1128.01](Laughter).
Hi. I'm a sociologist by training. I have a PhD in sociology. So, the question that springs to mind most to me is that schools are social constructs, and it seems to me that the kids that come to school come with a whole complex of social issues that they're also dealing with. And I just wonder if you could talk about testing, whether testing in relationship to what the kids are, whether testing is the measure indeed that is the critical measure for determining success for these kids, or whether, you know, I'll just leave it at that, whether testing is the critical issue for success. Thank you.
Lisa, why don't you start out?
Well, one thing that all the research shows is that the standardized tests do best is measure the socioeconomic status of the families that they come from. So, interestingly, there's been a trend towards colleges moving away from using SAT and ACTs for admission, and the reason that these colleges are giving is that they know that these tests just serve as a barrier for a lot of capable students, students who do have the skills and the ability to succeed in college, but the tests are just this artificial barrier that's more measuring, you know, the family's socioeconomic status than the ability of the students. And they wanted to, you know, shift their focus from these test scores and look at the students in a more multifaceted way, and look at their skills and abilities, look at them as a whole person, and give them the opportunity. So, the problem with using the tests as a high-stakes tool is that they're going to be, you know, false negatives. You're going to be identifying students as not having skills and the capabilities to move on with their lives when, in fact, if they were given the opportunity, they would be perfectly capable of doing so. So, they're not a good measure, you know, in and of themselves, and I just want to push back against something Dick said about we'd lose the spotlight, and parents wouldn't have the information they need, and we wouldn't have the information they need. As I pointed out, it's a moratorium not on the tests, not on giving tests and getting test results, but on using them for high-stakes purposes. So, we'd still have that spotlight, we'd still have the data, we'd be able to put that in the context of other ways of measuring how kids are doing, and, you know, look at students and teachers and schools in a more multifaceted way, in a more fair way, in a way that doesn't have these false negatives that just put a barrier up in front of people who would otherwise go on and have successful lives and contribute to our tax base.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Let me first respond to Lisa's last comment. The moratorium in House Bill 340 would forbid the Department of Education, during a three-year period, from using student achievement or growth measured by any standardized test, quote, "for the purpose of assessing the performance of any public school or school district." That is what the bill provides. To respond to your question, let me respond both in an academic way and also in a personal way. Lisa noted that a study showed that PARK and MCAS predicted only 5 to 18 percent of first-year college grades, and there's been a good deal of academic discussion about these issues, and a number of studies have looked at these issues. There was a study done in 2008 that pulled together a lot of studies and basically looked at the SATs, which a number of colleges are not requiring at this point. You can still submit them, but they're not requiring them. And it showed that SATs explained about as much variation in first-year college grades as did the high school grade point average. It was 25 percent SATs versus 27 percent grades for males, flipped for females. SATs about 34 percent, grades about 29 percent. But when you put grades and SATs together, you got a higher correlation, a higher explanation of first-year college grades. Those comments, or that sort of analysis, what PARK does, what MCAS does, what the SATs do in predicting first-year college grades are really, to me, a red herring, because we're not talking about the use of MCAS or PARK for college admissions. What I'm really talking about is setting a minimal level of competence when we send kids into the world from high school. And as I pointed out, the MCAS is basically equivalent to an eighth grade, a good eighth-grade math course. Some have argued that it should be made more rigorous, but that's a different issue than the one that I'm talking about. The issue is, should you be telling a child who's graduating from high school that he's ready to enter the world if you haven't set even this minimal standard? And I think it would be wrong to abandon that sort of minimal standard. We're not talking about MCAS as a college entrance test. Now, let me give you my personal comments. The school at which I'm volunteering now is about 93 percent black and Hispanic. It's over 75 percent low income, free and reduced-price lunch. Last year's 12th grade class was 87 percent low income. The kids look at MCAS as an opportunity to show what they know. It's not something that they see as threatening. They see it as an opportunity to demonstrate what they've achieved from the work that they've put in. And, you know, two years ago, 100 percent of the kids were advanced and proficient. It was one of only two high schools in the state. Last year, it was 98 percent advanced or proficient in ELA, 92 percent advanced and proficient in math and science, and nobody failing. So, it can be done regardless of socioeconomic background, regardless of the challenges that kids face at home. And I think kids rise to expectations.
Thank you, Dick.
We have a couple of more questions, so the next one.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Wolf from Precinct 2. What can be done to bring Boston and areas like it within reasonable levels of what we have in Brookline? Now, I think you just finished answering part of it. It's got to be something to do with the teachers. I have gone through this more than once here when we had this discussion, and it seems that one of the big things to blame is the unions. Is the unions that big of a problem, and what can be done to solve the whole thing?
I think we just, we want to keep it to the Warren Article.
Yeah. Bruce, I'm not going to, I guess, opine on that direct question. And I'm also not saying that standardized testing is a silver bullet, or that simply taking a test makes a kid smarter or teaches a kid. But I do think that standardized testing is just one of many things that helps put a spotlight on the achievement gap and areas that we need to address. Also, the testing in Massachusetts and the performance of schools is, in fact, tied to supports that the state provides to schools. There are a number of line items in the state budget that are tied to supports for schools that are Level 3, 4, and 5, that are tied to supports for schools where kids are low-income, that are tied to supports for kids who are, where there are a number of children who are performing poorly on MCAS, ranging from experts going in and providing assistance and providing supports, to funding for extended day, extended learning time, to funding for instructional materials. So, the, I think you need a, ultimately, there has to be emphasis on the problem, emphasis on the issue. There has to be a whole range of steps that are taken, and I think that the worst thing you do is to abandon, even for three years, with no way, no description of what happens after that time. The spotlight that this sort of evaluation does place evaluation does place on school districts, on schools, even in Brookline.
Thank you, Dick. Lisa, would you like to respond?
I don't think getting rid of teachers' unions would get the results that we're looking for. And if that were true, then Massachusetts, which has one of the strongest teachers' union in the country, would perform much more poorly than many of the states that have no teachers' union protections for their teachers, like many of the states in the South, which do very poorly when ranked on national measures. But we do know what works, what has worked, what the research shows works, and that's things like small enough class size so teachers can give individualized attention to the students in their classrooms. That's things like quality, high-quality early childhood education has been shown to be very influential in affecting student achievement and, you know, adequate resources. The same things that we all want for our students and people who send their children to private schools that spend, you know, $12,000 to $18,000 to $20,000 a year on their students. You know, rich people know that resources are helpful even for rich kids who have a lot of resources to begin with. And there's a process going on in the state that's completed of looking at what's called the foundation budget to see if we're spending enough as a state to support children's needs, especially poor children. And the conclusion is we are no longer doing that, the foundation budget formula that was created in 1993 with the education reform law is no longer adequate because of changes in the cost of health care and special education. So, it's not rocket science, it's not a mystery. We know it works and getting rid of teachers' unions isn't one of the things that does.
Thank you. The third question.
Thank you. Jane Gilman, Precinct 3. Forgive me if you've answered this either just now or if it was in the printed materials, which I didn't have time to review. Is there any way to tie any perceived or real gains to the institution of MCAS itself? There are, as you began to say, so many variables, whether it's instructional material, physical plant, class size, personality and training of the teacher, composition of the classroom, et cetera. Given all those variables, if there have been gains, is there a way to say it's because of our standardized testing?
Dick, would you like to say?
Much of what you see in the handout was in response to arguments by the proponents that standardized testing had a negative effect on minority students, had a negative effect on special needs students, had a negative effect on English language learners, and had a negative effect on low-income students. And basically, the data that you see in that packet is the data that goes back as far as the state reports it for each one of the metrics. And basically, what it does is it compares the metrics going back to, I think, 1992, '93 for some, to 2004 for others, to 2010 for others, 2006 for others, basically from the first year that the metric is reported to the last year that it was reported. And essentially, what it shows is that during this era of standardized testing, when the MCAS ELA and the MCAS math test were in effect, and now recently, beginning in 2010, when the science requirement came into effect, what the data actually shows is that all subgroups really are doing better on the issues that we think are important. Dropout rates, dropout rates by cohorts, that's groups that enter, graduation rates from high school, entry into college, enrollment in college and universities, with some very dramatic improvements, including one that was particularly striking to me, and that was the improvement in special ed students in the Boston district over the last several years, from about 21% enrolling in college to over 50% enrolling in college. So, that was really a response to the argument that these tests were negatively impacting the subgroups that are the most challenged in the system. And as I said, does testing by itself, I'm not contending that giving a test by itself accomplishes this, but I think the information that we derive from tests is exactly what casts a light on these issues. It's exactly what causes school districts like Boston. If you go to the Boston School website and look at the things that they have put in place as a district in response to the concerns raised by the results of testing, if you, and if you look at the fact that the state has put programs in place that provide millions of dollars in direct funding to districts that are the most struggling and that have the largest number of kids who are struggling on the basis of these standardized tests, I think the answer is that you really don't want to get rid of these metrics, that you don't want to abandon the idea, as House Bill 340 would, of using testing to evaluate school districts, to say you can't use it to assess the performance of a school district, and to say that kids could graduate from high school without meeting the very basic levels that MCAS tests.
Thank you, Dick. Lisa.
Well, as you said, you can't really, and even Dick acknowledges that you can't attribute all the gains simply to a test or even the high stakes piece of the test gets back to it. I started out talking about this idea of a silver bullet. There's too many variables. You know, there's just this focus on the test as the key piece when there were a lot of things that happened at the same time as implementation of the MCAS with this education reform law that included, you know, the law was in response to a lawsuit by low-income districts in the state that said the state was not fulfilling its constitutional obligation to provide enough resources to school districts to do their job. And legislature, you know, stepped up and passed this law that came with a lot of additional resources in an effort to equalize the resources between rich and poor districts. So, you had the development of new educational standards, you had large influx of new resources, you had equalizing resources, and you had a test, and you had the high stakes. So, you know, people, we're talking about human beings, and you can't isolate one variable and attribute the gains to that one variable. I think it had a lot more to do with resources than the test, any kind of gains that we've seen. The other issue, which gets back to why we're focusing on the high stakes, is the problem is when you put the high stakes on these test results, you end up saying, you know, all that really matters, or what matters most to us are how kids do on a test in math and a test in English. And that is just such a small piece of what we in Brookline and parents in Boston want their kids to get out of school. And what happens is you narrow what schools are all about to prepping kids for the test and this whole range of other really critically important things, valuable things, art, music, phys ed, you know, learning how to get along with other people, the whole socio-emotional, social-emotional realm of school, communication, collaboration, all the things that are not measured by these tests go by the wayside and go by the wayside first in the more disadvantaged districts. So, those are the kids who lose things that we take for granted in Brookline.
Thank you, Lisa. So, I think we'll go into closing remarks now, and we'll start out with Dick.
Okay. I'm not going to use anywhere near my full five minutes, so you'll be happy to hear that. The last comment that Lisa made about the narrowing of the curriculum is one that, I think, is addressed in a number of schools by additional learning time. That is something that is funded by the state for the districts that are struggling the most. And I guess the question is, if you are teaching basic math skills to somebody who is going to be sent into a competitive, technologically-advanced world, if you're going to be teaching basic reading and writing comprehension and communication, what is wrong with an emphasis on those subjects? What is wrong with sending a kid into the world and expecting that that child has the ability to communicate and the ability to use basic math? I think it's actually deceitful and wrong to send children out of high school without those skills. The moratorium that's proposed is not one that's innocuous. It would mean, as I stated, that for three years, you could not use standardized tests to assess the performance of school districts in this state, no matter how badly they were failing their students. That's what House Bill 340 provides. It would mean that parents would not have the information comparing the performance of schools and school districts. And it would mean that you'd be sending kids into the workplace, into the world, onto college, without even a guarantee of basic skills. For kids in Boston and Lynn and Holyoke, I think that would just be wrong. And over the three-year course of the moratorium, it would be about 12,000 students in Boston alone who would not have at least that minimal benchmark. So, I don't have any personal interest in Article 16. I'm no longer a parent. I'm not a member of the teachers' union. I am somebody who just works with the kids, who I think would be most severely affected by this moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Lisa?
Thanks. So, opponents say, and Dick says, that removing the pressure of the high stakes will plunge us into the bad old days of low achievement in places like Boston, in effect arguing for what is the education policy status quo. But recent results on a national assessment called NAEP, the National Assessment of Educational Progress, show the status quo is stagnant, if not growing, gaps in achievement between different subgroups of students. So, we, the petitioners, are not for the status quo, but for exploring better ways of increasing access to a rich, engaging, challenging educational environment for every student, one that is not, that we've seen is not produced by high-stakes testing. We're saying the status quo is actually entrenching and exacerbating gaps in achievement and needs to change to bring about what we think is real educational equity. I recently had the privilege of hearing a group of Brookline teachers, known as the Margaret Metzger Fellows, read essays, extraordinary essays, about their experiences teaching. And they talked about their passion for their students, their frustrations and struggles to engage and connect with the incredibly diverse students that sit in their classrooms here in Brookline. What they did not talk about in these essays is the role of testing. Because while tests do play a role, they are not central to the art and science of being an excellent educator. The problem with the way we've been using tests is that they have become too central. And all that this resolution would do is call for the state to hit the pause button, step back, look at the way we've been using tests, and see if we can put them back in their rightful place so they're not central and they're not driving things too powerfully. And I think not only should Brookline be among the leading communities in the state in pushing for positive change, but Massachusetts should be among the leading states in developing a more helpful and less damaging system. And we're seeing that education leaders in places like New Hampshire and parts of New York and California are already doing just that. And I would just encourage all of you to look at some models. For example, the New York Performance Standards Consortium, which is a group of schools serving a number of urban, low-income, students of color, about the size of the District of Boston, where they have eliminated the use of all standardized tests except one, English. And instead, they use a much more rich assessment approach involving performance assessments. And I've met some of these kids who've gone through this program and are now in college, tremendously successful in college because they actually were exposed to higher learning standards in this way, and they learned how to do research and write research papers and do science experiments and argue a point the way they will have to do in college. And it's remarkable. And they're like walking, living, breathing models of the kinds of really meaningful, successful results you can get when you stop focusing so narrowly on this measure that really doesn't measure what we value in our schools. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Dick.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I'd like to invite the presenters for Article 10 and 11 to come up. Richard?
Thank you. Sit down.
Yeah. So, as some of you may know, Article 10 is a proposal to ban the use of leaf blowers in Brookline. And related to that, but also quite separate, is Article 11, which would actually expand the use of leaf blowers. One Article 11 also gives the Commissioner of Public Works the discretion to allow leaf blower use in certain emergencies. So, speaking for Article 10 is Richard Nangle, and speaking in opposition is Faith Michaels. So, I'm going to hand it over to Richard to present his one article.
Okay. I hope you enjoyed the undercard. And this is the main event. This year, the co-petitioners of Article 10, myself and Irene Schaff, served on the Selectmen's Noise Bylaw Committee, which was charged with ironing out inconsistencies between the town's noise and leaf blower bylaws. The committee wrote a series of recommendations designed to improve the leaf blower bylaw. The Board of Selectmen will soon be taking up these findings, but the Noise Bylaw Committee did not have the authority to do what was most pressing, which was to substantively improve our leaf blower bylaw and offer relief for citizens who are tired of the constant drone of these unnecessary machines. In 2011, town meeting voted by a healthy margin to restrict the use of gas-powered leaf blowers to two months in the spring and three months in the fall. Landscaping companies fight these sorts of restrictions all over the country, but Brookline was strong enough to withstand the pressure four years ago and enact the leaf blower bylaw. Our proposal keeps that seasonal schedule. Leaf blowers may be used between March 15 and May 15, and again between September 15 and December 15. The most polluting of the leaf blowers, the gas-powered ones the town meeting restricted in 2011, would be eliminated. There would be a complete prohibition on leaf blowers in the summer, as is the case in Cambridge, and the town is fully exempted, as it is now. A number of communities across the country have already eliminated gas-powered leaf blowers, and landscape companies continue to flourish in all of these communities. Just this year, Los Gatos, California, a leafy suburb of San Jose, prohibited the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. In doing so, it noted the city of Palo Alto found that gasoline-powered leaf blowers produce fuel emissions that add to air pollution. It also noted in Orange County Grand Jury report that said these blower engines generate high noise levels and that gasoline-powered leaf blowers in particular are a danger to the health of the blower operator and, quote, "an annoyance to the non-consenting citizens in the area of usage." While the Brookline Leaves Organization uses the University of California Riverside School While the Brookline Leaves Organization uses a University of California Riverside study to debunk the idea of leaf blowers as polluters, Los Gatos and other communities across the country that have enacted leaf blower restrictions cite that very same report as evidence of the danger of leaf blowers. Funny how that works, isn't it? The landscapers go to great lengths to say they are improving their practices, not blasting gas-powered leaf blowers at the highest levels and not blowing at or near bystanders. But you live in this town, and you see all of this in practice, and you know it isn't true. These machines are used haphazardly and recklessly, and will continue to be unless we act. Also, the landscapers claim to support our summertime ban while at the same time proposing to reduce it by six weeks with their ill-advised Article 11 before it was amended to eliminate that time extension. In neighboring Newton, landscapers are working to prevent that community from instituting any restrictions at all. If they like our summertime ban so much, why aren't they urging other communities to adopt it? We've heard claims that landscapers will lose their jobs or raise their prices if Article 10 passes. Consider that the numerous communities that have enacted restrictions tougher than Brookline's have not witnessed job losses or increased costs to homeowners for landscaping services. Brookline's summertime ban has been in effect for four years. There's no evidence of job loss or increased fees during that time. It should neither be difficult nor sometimes impossible for Brookline residents to open a window or sit on a porch and enjoy their surroundings. And yet, the proliferation in our community of leaf blower noise, ear-piercing as it uniquely operates on a small bandwidth, makes these quiet moments rare. We spoke recently with an elementary school teacher who lamented that the constant use of leaf blowers near her classroom had her closing the windows in a failed attempt to shield her pupils from the noise and the dust that seeps in anyway. Let's remember that we are serving on town meeting not just for ourselves, but for the voiceless, the child who is learning, the elderly resident who is homebound, and people who work from home or work a second or third shift and need to sleep during the day. The leaf blower is an unnecessary impediment to all of that. Until just a few years ago, rakes did the job just fine, and the world got along without leaf blowers. I attended a demonstration in Newton last week and watched an organic landscaper do an admirable job blowing leaves with a battery-powered device that lasts about 40 minutes per charge and makes far less noise than a gas blower. Now, some might say that it would be inconvenient for a landscaper to keep several charged batteries on hand. Others might say that same landscaper already carries around a can of gasoline because gas blowers burn fuel so inefficiently. It is time for Brookline to embrace the technology of the present and step away from the polluting devices of the past. Article 10 and nothing else provides that direction.
Thank you. Lisa? Faith?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Faith Michaels, and I am a 30-year resident of Brookline. I raised my three kids here, founded a charity with my neighbors called Kids Clothes Club to make sure that all kids in need have warm winter coats, and I'm the owner of Faithful Flowers, a landscape design company. I think of myself as a green person. That's why I work outside and make things grow. I don't use pesticides and share with my clients the latest in sustainable practices. We use leaf blowers to do our job. It's an important tool to the trade. We use them according to the bylaws already on the books, limiting the time of year and decibel level allowed. Lifetime Brookline residents and landscape company owners like Michael Perrin and his wife, Ann West, Bobby and Nancy O'Connell, Pete Gately, who's out there too, somewhere, use leaf blowers. We came together with other landscape professionals and homeowners to try and understand the concerns of Article 10, and we call ourselves BrooklineLeaves.org. What we found was that the petitioner's studies and reports are out of date and unfounded. Edmunds is in the business of selling cars and trucks. The Edmunds report that compared leaf blower exhaust to truck exhaust is a four-year-old study, and actually, the leaf blowers that they used were not allowed to use here in Brookline. There's an excellent rebuttal online written by the Echo engineer who designed their new quieter machine. He found the study flawed and intuitively unbelievable. But of course, he does work for Echo. So I asked Elias Audi, who many of you may know, who owns the mobile station, maybe you don't know, he's also an engineer. I asked him to look at the study and the rebuttal, and he agreed that the testing was inaccurate and inconclusive. In regards to the Burlingame, California example that the petitioners hold up as the holy grail, that city decided not to ban gas-powered leaf blowers at all. They have an ordinance allowing them certain days in certain part of cities at 65 decibels. Most of what the petitioner was talking about before is in California. And here in Brookline, the conditions are very different. And I'm actually really happy this is coming to us in the fall so we can remember what a deluge of leaves we have on a daily basis. Another example the petitioner points to is the online pamphlet from the American Lung Association, which included leaf blowers as polluters. We contacted the American Lung Association, and they agreed that their information was out of date and that leaf blowers manufactured since 2011 are much cleaner. As a result, they updated the language in their website. We're not alone in finding this evidence flawed. Our Advisory Council on Public Health, comprised of several doctors, examined the petitioner's claims and found no compelling evidence that leaf blowers were harmful to the health of the citizens of Brookline. They voted no action. Our Board of Selectmen also voted no action. Our advisory board voted no action twice. And more importantly, the Green Caucus decided not to take a position. Town meeting member John Doggett independently came to his, did his own research, and came to the same conclusion as we did. If you'd like to see his PowerPoint, it is posted at BrooklineLeaves.org under just the facts. Leaf blowers are regulated by the EPA. The machines we are allowed to use in Brookline, and we have invested in at $500 to $600 a pop, meet the stricted standards. And yes, like most gasoline-powered engines, they do emit exhaust, but it's infinitesimal compared to all the other gas-powered devices we use every day: cars, trucks, planes, power plants. If we ban leaf blowers, are we going to ban lawn mowers, snow blowers, jackhammers, and other construction equipment that operate at even higher decibels? I think when it comes down to it, though, some people are just bothered by the noise. Can we do better? Absolutely. The current regulations were never well-publicized or communicated to homeowners and landscape professionals. Selectman Ben Franco and his committee met for over a year and came up with some very good recommendations, which should be put into effect. We support these ideas. All landscape professionals doing business in Brookline register with the town. A pamphlet in many languages will be given to landscapers and homeowners describing best practices and explaining the current regulations, much like the one from Cambridge. I have a couple of examples here if anybody wants to look at it afterwards. It's already working. Oh, one other thing, liaison officer Muse from the Brookline Police has already been named, and I think we should have a liaison from Brookline Leaves also. It's already working. A homeowner last night contacted me through Brookline Leaves. I'm helping him to seek out the landscape company that he believes is not in compliance. I'm going to speak to their office, make sure they know the regulations, and if there's more problems, I'll have the police take over. Leaf raking takes three to five times longer than using a leaf blower. That's what our DPW chief, Andy Papasturgen, found when he and his staff did a comparison study at Walnut Hills Cemetery. What does that mean to the homeowner? Increasing costs. I recently had my staff blow the leaves from my client's very small yard that always seems to attract a great deal of leaves. It took two hours, that's $144. That same yard was raked a couple of weeks later, the cost was more than double, at $300. I just did my own little experiment. That doesn't help any of our older clients who are trying to age in place as their bills go through the roof. I know I just have a couple more minutes, but I do want to say that we have a petition at BrooklineLeaves.org, and hundreds of Brookline citizens and those in the landscape industry have left important comments, which I have here if anybody wants to take a look at them, at how this ban will hurt them. We provide a valuable service to all of Brookline. We clean off sidewalks and help keep the storm drains clear. To quote DPW chief, "Even if the town is exempt from the ban, the town will be a mess. Some will rake, some will not. Others will decide that they cannot afford to have the leaves raked, and many landscape providers will leave Brookline. We service multiple properties each day, raking and brooming sidewalks for properties ranging from 10,000 square feet to acres. It's a physical impossibility as we try to service all our customers and try to beat the winter weather." And remember, we're the ones doing the plowing in the winter. The machines, the good news is, the machines continue to evolve, and the industry is actually listening to consumers. I do envision the day when we have electric leaf blowers that are quiet, powerful, and have long battery life and can be used in a professional setting. Right now, electric just can't do the job. They're actually noisier, they take longer because they're not as powerful. For now, let's all work together and become a model for other towns to follow. Let's educate, not regulate. Please urge your town meeting member to vote no on 10. Two nights ago, the Brookline I know and the Brookline I love came together at the Rotary event, Dancing with the Stars. They raised $260,000 for local charities, among them, my Kids Clothes Club. That's what Brookline does best. We come together to solve problems. Thank you very much.
As we take up our questions, we need to remind both the questioners and the speakers at the front of a two-minute limit for each of the questions and for your answers to those questions. I hope all the questioners are lined up here beside me, and we'll start.
Hi, thank you. My name is John Harris, town meeting member, Precinct 8. Up until very recently, many of us thought there were only two options regarding this issue. One was to use a leaf blower to get rid of the leaves, the other is to use a rake. But in just the last week or so, town meeting member Carol Kero told us there's a third option, which is something that is called a lawn and litter vacuum. And basically, that definitely, what it does essentially, it's a vacuum cleaner, just like an inside-your-house vacuum cleaner. So it definitely takes care of the blowing problem, which is, you know, blowing the leaves onto your neighbor's yard or onto the street. They are gas-powered, as far as I know, and there's, I just don't know what the noise implications of those machines are. And I'm just wondering if this changes the dynamic, and I'm actually asking the petitioners on both sides, please, just what you're, is there a possibility that lawn and litter vacuums can maybe be a common ground between the two of you? I don't know. Thank you.
Richard?
There's a lot of new technology out there, and that's why Article 10 is a good thing to pass, because we're not going to see this new technology in Brookline if we don't pass Article 10. We're not going to see this new technology in Brookline if we just go with the Noise Bylaw Committee recommendations. I was on that Noise Bylaw Committee. It did great work. Irene Schaff, who was my co-petitioner, was on that Noise Bylaw Committee. There's another member of the Noise Bylaw Committee in the crowd tonight. She supports Article 10. We understand that the two things are not the same. The Noise Bylaw Committee will make the leaf blower regulations work better. But Article 10 is going to force the change toward new technology that we won't otherwise get. So all of those things, John, that you've mentioned, I've seen them in tests. I think they're great, and I'd like to see them in Brookline.
I'm surprised that you think they're great because it's a gas-powered machine. But besides the fact, I just want to say that I'm always interested in new technology. I think that you have to remember that leaf blowers are used for a lot of different things. We use them to gently clean out flower beds without damaging the flowers. That particular machine doesn't quite do that. I could see it being used on a big lawn in an open space. But there are companies that clean gutters, they use leaf blowers. There are companies that, before you lay the asphalt, you have to completely clean off the area. They use leaf blowers. There are people who are cleaning the parking lots, they use leaf blowers. So there are a lot of different things that these devices are used for, if done properly. Thank you.
Jane Gilman, Precinct 3. I wanted to make a couple of distinctions here. One is, the Green Caucus did not vote on these Warren Articles because they do not fall within our mission. So it was neither a pro or con statement, it was just like, not something we would opine on. I wanted to thank you, Ms. Michaels, for your statement about encouraging the industry to come into compliance, because I think the reason this issue came back in such a short period to town meeting is because the industry has really abused their right to work here by not following the legislation that was passed in 2011 by town meeting. And had the other contractors been in compliance, I don't think that the petitioner would have needed to bring the Warren Article. So whatever you can do towards that end would be terrific. I also want to make another distinction, which is with respect to the noise. There is a particular frequency of leaf blowers, unique to machinery, that...
Excuse me? We need to get to the answers.
So they are distinct from lawn mowers, they're distinct from pile drivers, earth movers, and all of the things that surround us in noise, there is a high-pitched frequency. And I think that's what sets them apart and makes some regulation necessary. Thank you.
Faith, would you like to respond to that?
I don't think there was a question, it seems. I would respond to it. I appreciate it. I, I, I think you could go on.
I'll respond. Well, I think Jane's speaking to the, to the unique nature of the noise, and this has been brought up throughout the, you know, throughout the campaign, which is that how can a leaf blower be objectionable when it's 67 decibels, when a lawn mower is 75 decibels, but we don't find it objectionable? And I, and I think that there's, there's a reason for that. It's because leaf blowers operate on a very low frequency, on a very, what I mean to say is narrow frequency, whereas lawn mowers and other noise spread out among several frequencies. But I also think that your ears aren't lying, you know? Your decibel meter, I don't need your decibel meter when my ears can tell me that leaf blowers are more bothersome than any other thing I could possibly listen to, and I think most of the people who are going to vote with us would, would feel the same way.
Hi. I have a two-part question. First question, first part is, why are all of your studies compared...
Who are you?
Excuse me. Pete Gately, Brookline Landscape Company, contractor in this town for over 34 years, lifetime resident, third generation, okay? With two behind me. All right. Why are all your studies comparing the town of Brookline, which is a northeast area, to a California area, which is a seasonal, has mild seasons year-round, and different environment all the time, and the time limits on cleaning up the leaves in the, in the fall is much shorter, especially as they drop as fast as they do? Number one. Number two is, how would you expect landscape contractors, both doing residential and commercial properties in this town, to clear up the amount of area that needs to be cleaned up without the blowers, which is in excess of what the town of Brookline has to clean up with blowers in a short period of time?
Studies and not using blowers. All right, well, I'll take the second part first. The reason that we amended Article 10 to say that you could use leaf blowers in the spring and the fall is to answer that question. So you can still use a leaf blower, you just can't use a gas-powered one. And we think that the trade-off between not using gas-powered leaf blowers and whatever hardship that creates, which is dubious, is worthwhile because it makes our community greener and it makes our community cleaner. Your first question had to do with studies. I think the studies are coming out of California because California has had more success in passing, in passing these ordinances than eastern states. There are some in New York, and there's some in Connecticut, and there's some in Illinois and Florida, but California is where it really began, and California has, has done quite a few of these. So it's, so it's natural that, that you'd have that. But I think you're going to see more and more on the East Coast. As far as climate goes, unless you're talking about Los Angeles, northern California communities, while they may have a little bit of a warmer climate than we do, they have trees, they drop leaves, they have a leaf season. They're very much like us, except for the fact that they don't get quite as cold. That's kind of a non sequitur.
California is a completely different zone than Massachusetts. I think we all know that. In terms of using electric leaf...
In terms of using electric leaf blowers as they are right now in the industry, it, I said it when I, in my main speech, they just aren't practical. They can't push the heavy wet leaves for the big cleanups that we have to do in the fall and early spring, as we had this very messy spring. So when Richard was talking about the Newton, the guy from Newton who did the little demo the other day, I also went to that demo, and, you know, it was sort of, I applaud that guy, I think it's great. I'm hoping in 10 years he has a great business and the industry brings out some great, great new machines. But right now, it was like he had a sort of a little toy, and it was, you know, it was pushing the leaves and it, and it took a really long time. And, you know, I, unfortunately, the, the electric just doesn't do the job, and we, I mean, just, we look around town today, and I think it's very evident about what we need to do to get these leaves up. There are a lot of big trees in Brookline, and they keep getting bigger.
Hi, my name's Ann West. I'm in precinct eight. I wonder if each of you could address the ramifications of exempting the town and the country club, which are both very big users of leaf blowers. So, Mr. Nangle, from the point of view of what you're trying to achieve with this ban, and, and also the issue of equity in the town in terms of, of the use of a, of a machine that everybody seems to need to do the same job?
It's a fair question. Our leaf blower article right now, it started as a full ban. We've pulled back significantly. The ban today focuses exclusively on gas-powered leaf blowers. We left all the exemptions that were passed in 2011, and we felt that that was the, the best way to do it, to just focus on gas-powered leaf blowers.
But, but I, if I can just keep asking...
Sure.
I mean, I, there is still a very major exemption. You talked about the children in a classroom who were bothered by the leaf blowers. They're going to still be hearing them, and the town, not only the town, is using them, but also the people that they hire. And, and this is really an issue of equity among the people who work here.
I, I live next to Puttaham Golf Course, and I live next to a green, and they're on that green at seven o'clock in the morning, and I'm not happy about it. I didn't want to exempt the town, but we had to do, we had to do what we could to win a town meeting, and that's why we did it.
Faith, could you talk about the ramifications from your point of view?
Well, I think the petitioner has gone back and forth and back and forth on whether the, the town is exempt, the country club exempt. If you think about all the other parcels of land in the town, we have the Hellenic College, we have Pine Manor, Dexter, Southfield, Beaver, Brimmer, Newbury College, to name a few. I've been in contact with all of them, and they are quite upset about this possible ban. They, I mean, in reality, they don't know how they would clean up their campuses with electric machines at the moment. You know, I, it, it is, it is strange to exempt the country club and not everybody else.
We did exempt everyone else.
You, did, where are you at now? Sorry.
It's, it's, we did this on, over the weekend. We went back, we went back to the...
So who's, was the country club exempted or not exempted?
Thank you so much!
You're welcome.
So what is the current state?
It's the same exemption that we've had all along, which is over five acres for non-residential property. So we took that off the table.
Over five acres for non-residential?
And it's not unusual for warrant articles to evolve. It's not an unusual thing.
What about Lars Anderson?
Let's take the, the next question at the podium, please.
Hi, I'm Joe Caruso from Newton, Massachusetts. I'm a landscaper who serves seven people in Brookline, seven different clients. I'm also the gentleman that organized the leaf blower demonstration in Newton. And for everybody's information, that whining, electric, battery-powered machine was 60 decibels, according to the police DBD meter. It's underpowered, it would have never done anything in, in wet leaves. Now, I'm going to say the same question again. Is it fair that the DPW golf courses in large areas will be able to use gas-powered blowers while the rest of us have to use battery-powered blowers? Is it really a health issue or a cost issue that powers these exemptions, according to the DPW study of 9/22/15 from Mr. Peppa Sturgeon? And is it fair that residents and professionals be forced to accept increased costs while the DPW and golf courses will be exempted from these obvious high costs and expenses? Again, is it a health issue or a money issue? Thank you.
Richard?
I'm, I'm not sure what your question is, but I would say to you that it, with regard to trying to win town meeting, you're asking me to go fourth in goal from the 10-yard line instead of kicking a field goal. I'm kicking the field goal.
All I'm saying is, Mr. Peppa Sturgeon said it's a five-to-one cost, then the obvious answer is you bow down to the cost, and the people's health issue is collateral damage or does not exist.
Well, you're entitled to your opinion.
Faith, would you like to?
No.
I, I would want to say that the town performs a function that's quite different than what's performed at a private residence. You know, we get a benefit from clearing leaves from football field or clearing leaves from Lars Anderson Park, or clearing leaves from a golf course, or from our town streets in Coolidge Corner and whatnot, that we don't get when landscapers come in. And let me give you a good example. Last Friday, at a very large property near my house that constantly has leaf blowers going, they came in, in the morning, two hours on an 800-yard driveway, blowing leaves. It was a windy day. By the middle of the day, the leaves were all back. Three o'clock in the afternoon, they came back and they blew them again. Saturday morning, I took a walk through a park near that driveway, and there they were again. What a waste of time. That's what we're trying to stop here.
I'll give, so, thank you, sir. Faith, I'll give you some time to respond to that if you would like.
Well, I, I, in speaking with Andy Peppa Sturgeon, we actually do a very important thing for the town, and that is when we are doing our clients' yards, we also do the sidewalks, and we often also clear the storm drains, and that's what's called best practices. And we definitely won't be able to be doing that kind of extra work. The town comes around and tries to get as much as they possibly can, and then the leaves come down again, and then we clear them. And just take a ride around the town this week, and you can see it all in play.
I'm Kate Beejen, and I live in the Lars Anderson condominium complex, where our average age is 72 years old. Many single women, whether widows or whatever. How do you expect us to get out there with our rakes and our brooms and knowing that our, the people that are working for us, there are three men, they come in there with their blowers and do the job efficiently? There is no way, they have already said they will no longer work for us. How do you, what are we going to do?
If you Google Brookline and landscaper, you'll get 500 entries. Anybody who decides they don't want to work in Brookline anymore, there are 10 people who want to take their place.
And what do you think it will cost us? We've moved there...
I don't think it'll, I don't think it'll cost you anything different because there's never been any evidence that there's been a cost increase with regard, with regard to this anywhere at any time, and if there was...
Time is money.
Do you want an answer? If there was, we'd have seen evidence of it already because of the Brookline gas-powered ban for the four months in the summer, but we haven't seen it.
Well, I would invite you to come to my house and talk to the residents at Lars Anderson, with their arthritis and their replaced hips and their replaced everything.
No one is stopping anybody from using an electric leaf blower or a battery-powered leaf blower on those properties.
So I think this brings up a good point, and I'm glad we circled back to it, that has to do with the cost and what Richard was saying about, that he's seen no increase in cost, or he hasn't heard about it. Well, the thing is, we use the electric in the summer for a whole different reason than we do in the fall. So the summer, we might cut your lawn and clean off your walkway, and that's it. I'm, I'm not doing big leaf cleanups, you know? It's just, we pull that machine out quickly, boom, 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 we're done. The cleanup that we do in the fall and the cleanup that we do in the early spring is extensive. It takes a lot of time. Right now, I'm trying to beat the weather that I know is coming and, you know, make sure that I hit all my customers as it is, and I'm actually having a hard time doing that because there's a very, Mother Nature's fickle. There's a very late leaf drop this year. There was a very late snow in April. It messes us up. Hope I made that point.
We'll take one more question and then move on to closing.
Hi, my name is Carol Spitzer. I'm a landscape designer in Brookline, and I hire landscape, landscapers to do cleanups and installations. I just have a question of the work that Ben Franco's committee did and the recommendations they made, and why not try a year or two of those recommendations to see if we can't make the current system work better before we make it more difficult for the landscapers to try to do their jobs?
It's a fair question. I was on that committee, as I've said. My co-petitioner Irene Schaff was on that committee, and Mara Toomey, who was on that committee, is in the crowd tonight. What that committee did has nothing to do with what Article 10 is doing, and I want to make this clear. I believe that everybody on that committee wanted to do more than that committee was allowed to do. That committee had a very narrow charge. It was to make the noise bylaw and the leaf blower bylaw work together. We came up with 12 recommendations, but what we couldn't do and what we wanted to do was regulate leaf blowers more on the calendar. We could not do that with the Noise Bylaw Committee. Article 10 complements what the Noise Bylaw Committee has done perfectly. The Noise Bylaw Committee is there to make the leaf blower bylaw work better. If Article 10 passes, we'll still have a leaf blower bylaw, and what the Noise Bylaw Committee has done will make that leaf blower bylaw better. Enforcement will be easier. Enforcement is very difficult right now, virtually nonexistent. If somebody wants to violate the summertime ban, and a lot of people do, there is very little chance they're going to get a ticket.
Well, thank God that committee had a small charge because there wasn't one landscaper on that committee. The landscape community really hadn't woken up to what was going on here because we're working away, trying to make a living. And it was very nice that Ben Franco invited a few of us to come and, and listen, but most of the people on that committee want to ban leaf blowers. So, you know, it's a good thing that they came up with some good recommendations, and I think, I know Ben Franco is really excited about trying to move those forward and, and getting the town to try them. I've talked, I've talked to the chief of police, I've, I've talked to Lieutenant Phil Harrington and Deputy Commissioner, Commissioner Grobman. They're all very serious about this, and I do believe we can, I, all work together. I can work with them, others in our community can work with them, and, and really, you know, make this a workable situation. Do we have to give people who are out there tickets? Well, they're doing a lot of advising, they're telling them the rules. If they cut, if they catch them again, or three times, well, that's, that's time for the ticketing. I think, I think that's probably, yeah, I think that's it.
Okay. Okay, so Faith, why don't you start it out with closing remarks?
Okay. So Article 10 has been working its way through Brookline's boards and commissions in the last month, all of them. Not one of them has supported Article 10. Article 10 places a financial burden on Brookline homeowners. Article 10 hurts small businesses of your neighbors who have all carefully followed Brookline's bylaws and purchase expensive equipment that meets all of Brookline's guidelines. Article 10 hurts the hundreds of other landscape providers who service thousands of clients here in the town. Some people think, oh, just hire more people or put teams to work. We can't find enough people to do this work as it is. Landscape work is hard, physical labor. I'm pretty tired at the end of the day. Arlington tried to ban and rescinded it, and now they have a decibel in time regulations in place. Dr. Jamie Banks of Quiet Communities led an effort in Lincoln, Mass. to regulate leaf blowers. They studied leaf blowers for two years. They ended up withdrawing their warrant article from town meeting this year. And as she's quoted in the Boston Globe, "It was an effort to educate rather than regulate." Brookline is a town of 50,000 people. There've been at least, there have been 300 leaf blower complaints in the last three years. 120 of those were made by the petitioners. Is this a real problem? Is this a real problem? Obviously, some people feel strongly that it is, and I do want to respond to that. I think the landscape community is willing to work hard to solve this issue together. Thank you so much.
So many things to say and not enough time to say it. Lincoln wasn't a progressive enough community to pass anything. You have to be a very progressive community to do this. There's a reason that only Cambridge and Brookline have done it. There's a reason why it's only happened in a few greater New York communities and some of the, a couple of the liberal towns in Connecticut. There's a reason why California has done most of it. It's a very liberal state and, and in many of the liberal communities. Personally, I cut my own lawn. I have an acre. I mulch with a gas mower into, into the lawn. It's a great thing to do. There's no reason for me to ever use a leaf blower. I can't imagine ever doing such a thing. I do want to say, I want to thank PAX for its endorsement Sunday night. PAX has been on the forefront of environmental issues in this community for as long as I've lived here and longer. They were on the forefront of banning secondhand cigarette smoke, and, and they've been there for every important progressive issue, and they stand for social justice, and I'm very proud to have Article 10 endorsed by them. Four years ago, when we did our, when we did the summertime ban, which I was not a part of, there was no support from the Board of Selectmen. The advisory committee voted against it 22 to 1, and there was no support from, from the Health Board. What we did see was that this year, there was no support from the Board of Selectmen, but when somebody offered an amendment to our original bylaw, which was to ban leaf blowers entirely, when someone offered an amendment for a gas-powered ban, that lost 12 to 7 on that advisory committee. That's a very significant vote, and that shows that this issue has evolved over time. And that's, that's when we knew that we were going to win a town meeting. I want to end by reading a letter that was sent to me by a town meeting member. She is the, she's the executive director of the Devotion After School Enrichment Program, and she writes, "I am not picking on leaf blowers, nor am I displacing frustration or feelings of powerlessness on bigger issues. Anyone who knows me knows that I feel empowered to effect meaningful change on issues both big and small. Instead, I see the proposed ban on leaf blowers as a legitimate issue in and of itself, affecting health and quality of life and meriting debate and discussion." As town meeting members, we have debated many smaller issues. Let me state my position clearly. I am thrilled to have the opportunity to ban leaf blowers. In addition to the pollution they cause, I consider them by virtue of their noise, a real nuisance affecting quality of life and work. Here are a few examples to note. Several unit owners in my association work remotely from home and cannot speak with clients by phone or Skype when leaf blowers are being operated. Those in school cannot study or concentrate on their work while leaf blowers are being used. Countless small children in my condo association, including my own at the time, have been unable to nap during leaf blower use. Lastly, and most bothersome, the amount of dirt and dust leaf blowers blow around is obscene and unhealthy, especially for anyone with asthma or other respiratory issues. In spring and fall, if any of the ground floor apartments leave their windows open, they come home to find considerable dirt, mulch, and dust blown into their homes, covering furniture fixtures, window treatments, and floorings. Our association's Board of Trustees, of which I'm a member, has tried for years to ban leaf blowers from our property, but landscaping crews bring them anyway, and we cannot always be around to police them. A townwide ban would solve this problem. By the way, when I have been home, heard the roar, and gone outside to tell a landscaper crew not to use leaf blowers, somehow the job still gets done and done quite effectively. Leaves are raked up and removed without the use of these annoying and unhealthy machines, and the landscaper has neither complained nor quit. Mind blowing, huh? And I say, no, it's not mind blowing at all. It's what will happen if we pass Article 10."
Thank you, Richard, and thank you, Faith. I'd like to invite Mary Deward up and Cliff Brown for Article 6.
55 of the 65 acres of Lars Anderson Park as parkland under Massachusetts laws. Such dedication allows Brookline eligibility for up to $400,000 in grant monies for park improvements. It also invokes Article 97 of the Massachusetts Constitution and its protections and restrictions. The article was submitted by the Parks and Recreation Commission. Speaking for the article is Mary Deward. Speaking in opposition is Cliff Brown, and we'll start as we did before with speaking for the article. Mary?
Well, thank you for inviting me to present on behalf of Article 6. I'm Mary Deward, town meeting member from Precinct 3. I'm a 36-year resident, and I'm a former member of the Park and Rec Commission. I wanted to begin by just saying that Lars Anderson Park has been under town care now for going on nearly 80 years. That's a long time, and we are, we have now a compelling and a distinctive and a significant public park. It's welcoming, open, green space for all people in Brookline, our region, and beyond. It's a very, very important park in Brookline. It's one of our largest parks. It is our largest park. It's ageless, it's priceless, it's an open space treasure. And now, in this era, prized, it's prized for its historic landscape qualities, it's prized because it's on the National Register of Historic Places, it's prized because it's got recreational opportunities abounding, just passive and active recreation, and its significant environmental and climate mitigating benefits are substantial. It's a masterpiece of landscape in the past, and it continues to be a vital presence in our community, especially for those people who travel from afar and travel from nearby to get to Lars Anderson Park. It's a great destination. Lars Anderson Park has been substantiated in the town's open space plan that's developed by town commission, the Preservation Commission representatives from the Green Space Alliance, representatives from the Conservation Commission, and many have been involved in the open space plan. And it's also been represented in the town's comprehensive plan, which emphasizes the park's significant qualities. The current vision for Lars is sustained in these plans and approved by citizen committees, as I said, and it's also approved by the Brookline Board of Selectmen. They sign off on these plans, and they have for these two plans. There's a line item budgets have also been passed by town meeting, and most recently in May of 2013, $660,000 was approved by town meeting, and it shows the appreciation that town meeting has already expressed for the park's significance in the town of Brookline. So, what is this article all about? As the moderator said, the article is about Lars Anderson becoming eligible for a park improvement state grant for up to $400,000, and to get this money, the town must declare that the 55 acres within the specific grant project area are dedicated parkland. And to create this dedicated parkland status, town meeting would need to vote to enact an existing state law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 45, Section 3, also known as Article 97. Article 97 helps communities protect their open spaces. Should Article 97 pass town meeting, Lars would benefit from Article 97 protections, which are significant. However, Article 97 in itself is not a foolproof designation. Reversing an Article 97 designation is possible and would require a unanimous vote of the Parks and Rec Commission, a two-thirds vote of town meeting, and a two-thirds vote of the state legislature. And it's, the town council has not been clear whether or not a policy of land swap might be, or might not be part of this requirement. So, if we take land from Lars, to use for development at Lars Anderson Park, potentially, the developing body would have to find land elsewhere in Brookline. And please note, as described, there are about 10 separate acres, including a portion in Boston, that are not included in the Article 97 protection zone. The vote for designated parkland would only include 55 acres within the proposed grant area. So, as someone who's really followed Lars Anderson Park very closely, I created a video called Isabel's Gift: The Story of Lars Anderson Park in 19, the late 1980s. I'm really interested in why Lars Anderson is what it is today, and as many of you may know, in 1948, Isabel Anderson willed her famous premier property to the town, and town meeting, in all its wisdom, voted, although narrowly, some say one vote, some say three, to accept the property, because they, those town meeting members recognized its value as a premier open space, and dedicated to, and they were dedicated to take the property off the tax rolls to become a public park for all. I think that's really important, that this is a park for all. It's not, there are no special interests. It's a park for all. In the 1980s, Brookline preservation staff recognized the significance of the park, its historic landscape, and the carefully researched and work resulted in enlisting Lars as a national register property. In 1988, Lars Anderson Citizen Open Space Visionaries defeated a town proposal to create a lighted ball field on top of Brookline's last undeveloped drumline. I see some people in the audience who were part of that effort, which was substantial. The Park and Rec Commission at the time said there was no appropriate ball fields in town, and they were proposing to put a lighted ball field on the last undeveloped drumline in Brookline, and we had meetings and managed to convince the powers that be that the true value of Lars Anderson Park was really important. Do you want to change the slide? And the state, actually, the grant money, which was supposed to go to the lighted ball field and a few other improvements, was then directed instead towards much-needed improvements, improvements, including special features such as our iconic Temple of Love. And you can see some of those features in detail on this map. Park champions have raised funds to help create the skating pavilion, the new skating pavilion incorporating columns from the former Italian garden. The columns had been spread all over town, were being used as bumper stops. So, it was quite the detective search around town to find those bumper stops in front of the Driscoll School and along Amory Park. This was an era before appreciation for historic landscapes had entered into the Brookline conversation. And under the thoughtful and thorough planning guidance of Parks and Open Space Director Aaron Gallantyne and supportive town meeting, the town has worked towards and funded significant improvements. And I might just pause to mention that, I can't read that.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, my gosh. All right. Well, in the past, before Aaron Gallantyne became our park director, we were subjected to a philosophy of demolition by neglect, and Aaron's efforts to secure funding, to advocate for the park, to watch out for us in everyday issues around the park, has been a very important aspect of it. And this is a grant that she has initiated for the town for an additional $400,000 to add to our $660,000 to make substantial improvements to Lars Anderson Park.
Hi, my name is Cliff Brown. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 14 and a member of the advisory committee, and I'm really here to discuss the, I guess, to go over the conversations and discussion that we had at the advisory committee with respect to Article 6. I think both myself and probably everyone on the advisory committee would agree with almost everything that we just heard in terms of facts. The park is an incredible resource for Brookline, and indeed, for the surrounding area, and I don't think anyone, myself included, would like to see anything happen to this park, and I personally hope that nothing does happen to it. On the other hand, the advisory committee, the selectmen, the school committee, and town meeting members really need to put our personal views and feelings aside when evaluating this situation at this point in time. Here are some additional points and facts to consider. Lars and Isabel Anderson gave this park, or this piece of property to the town in a deed of gift contemplating charitable, educational, and recreational uses. To propose to restrict the overwhelming majority of the site to Article 97 status really runs counter to the Anderson's overall wishes. Both the 1989 and the 2006 plans that were referenced a few minutes ago were completed before any increase in the school population that we're trying to address, and neither of those plans is immutable. To continue forward without revisiting these plans, given the current context, is, in our view, simply poor public policy. The town has recently completed, launched, or is about to launch, no less than nine major, large-scale, and long-term planning initiatives: high school feasibility study, the just-completed Civic MOC Cade 8 study, the Strategic Asset Plan, which is a town-wide needs assessment, Coolidge Corner Library, Coolidge Corner Parking Study, the Housing Production Plan, the MIT Route 9 Corridor Study, Complete Streets, and the Large Parcel Study for the town. Common sense points to waiting to receive, digest, and understand the recommendations of such planning studies before making significant changes in, for example, zoning, and it can be easily argued that the proposed change in Lars Anderson's status is equivalent to rezoning the largest parcel of land in town. Why would Article 6 would sacrifice enormous flexibility for a mere $400,000, and even that amount is not guaranteed. There's $8.4 million of additional funds in the CIP for Lars Anderson, including almost $5 million in the next five years. We will have other opportunities to go to the state for help in the future, once these other plans and strategic asset reviews are completed. The argument that only 55 acres are proposed and 10 acres are available ignores a couple of points. Almost four acres of the 10 is in Boston. Boston is not subject to the Dover Amendment. This could vastly complicate any future uses there. We'd have to get Boston approval for any zoning that we would want to do, and it makes an assumption that the land over here is necessarily adequate for any particular uses that we might have. One of the things that you need to understand is that you've got the auto museum there, you've got an enormous amount of equipment for parks and recreation, and someplace needs to be found to house all of that. 20 acres of additional park space has been created within the last seven years in town, despite virtually no increase in the population of the town. Lars is virtually inaccessible to anyone without a car or the ability to bike there. The school committee unanimously voted to oppose Article 6. Waiting for the completion of the studies does not necessarily mean anything will happen to this park. It's just waiting to see. There are other groups in town who would love the opportunity to ensure that their favorite piece of property is protected from evaluation for reuse. That is understandable, especially for those folks like the Parks and Recreation Commission, who are essentially charged with one task. That is not a luxury or approach that can be embraced by town meeting now. There has been much criticism of the schools and the selectmen over the past several years regarding the lack of long-term planning. We cannot be hypocritical at this juncture. We need, as a community, to be pragmatic and open, to leave all of our options on the table as we struggle with the continued population growth in the public schools, and in the assessment of the future needs of the community, both the schools and all of our other entities and the services that we provide. Thank you.
Are there people in the audience who wish to come forward with questions?
Hi, sorry, I'm Brian Hooklightner. I'm a town meeting member in Precinct 6, and I'm also a former Parks person. I worked for several years before I became a lawyer in law school for the New York City Park System, which we call the Emerald Empire, not to be confused with the Emerald Necklace. It's about 28,000 acres. I was the chief of staff for Capitol Projects there, and spent, you know, I took great pride in spending my time restoring and expanding and reconstructing, you know, the Austin Park Network there, very similar to the one here in Boston and Brookline with, in terms of the influence from Olmsted. Question I have is, having read the combined reports, in particular, the report from the advisory committee hearing on this, I was confused by one thing, which is that there's that line that sort of wraps around and red there, and it just, to me, struck me as incredibly arbitrary where it was drawn, and in the report, it seemed to, it seemed to be that there had been some discussion about this, and that the advisory committee was told that that was where the line had to be in order to qualify for this $400,000. We needed to dedicate all of the 55 acres, and it just didn't kind of add up to me, because I thought, why not 54 acres? Why not 56 acres? Why does it curve that way? What's, what's the impetus for that line, and why are we, why are we, I mean, just to go back to Cliff's point, why are we deciding that line today when we don't have more information about what might have to happen?
You want me to take a stab at it? I think I know the answer to that, or Mary?
Well, I, go ahead. I'll speak if I need to.
Sure. So, I, a couple of things. There's a pathway that goes around the park, and that red line follows the pathway, and that essentially is where the money would be used. And the grant application was done this summer, and we can't change it at this point and still have the grant be in play. So, it's not to say it couldn't change in the future, but if we did, then you would have to take that grant application out.
Well, I would say we wouldn't want to change it in the future. I know Lars Anderson Park like the back of my hand, and the areas that have been included in the potential designated 97 land are critical connections between spaces that are uninterrupted, that are authentic, and in the landscape terms, you call it significance and integrity. And this park has, in spite of the fact that there are areas that have been taken out of the historic landscape, it has integrity. And the area that is not included, the 10 acres, even if it's in Boston, excluding, of course, the Chateau de Chaman, which is the, which we, is known as the Transportation Museum, and now the Lars Anderson Museum, is in that area. But most of that area is capable, and the school committee is But most of that area is capable, and the school committee is considering it as one of two possible imminent, one of two possible preferred sites, but there are other sites that are also part of their consideration, has degradation in it. And there is some flexibility around even, you know, making it part of the conversation. I personally don't want to see a school there for other reasons because of, I can't read that time. Okay. I think it's, but I think it's an important note that it is up for discussion. And there is something about sitting on paper and looking at a study, a facility study, without understanding the heart and soul of a place. And I don't think that heart and soul of a place has been integrated into the discussion well enough for people to realize what we would be doing to Lars Anderson Park should we open up those 55 acres to a potential facility.
Hi. I'm Linda Roseman, Precinct 14. I have a question about that 10 leftover acres. I understand four of those acres are in Boston. Does Boston maintain those four acres? Or do we maintain them? That's my first question.
Okay. Well, I should know that, but I'm pretty sure we do. The actual, it's so minimally perceived as Boston that we call it Lars Anderson Park because it was part of the original designation and that boundary line was part of Isabel and Lars's estate.
So my second question is, does Boston want that four acres? I mean, is there a way to move the boundary?
We already own it.
What do you mean?
So Brookline owns that property. It just happens to be, it's owned, part of it's in Boston.
Right. So it's under their jurisdiction. Should there, we need some zoning relief or approval. I guess my question is, is there a way to move the boundary so that it would lie within Brookline so that that would no longer be necessary and it could be part of a 10-acre parcel? If we were to want to put a school there, for example, it would give us a little more wiggle room. Is that a possibility?
It's an important question that I think has been asked many times, and it's, we should ask it again.
Or even, you know, in the case of the Arboretum, for example, where Harvard leases the land, you know, it's got a thousand-year lease or something like that. I don't know what the terms of it are, but if that might be a possibility of some kind also, something to find out.
Hi. My name's Don Weitzman. I'm a town meeting member in Precinct 12. Couple of clarifications first. The vote on this in town meeting, is it a majority vote or a two-thirds vote?
Two-thirds.
A two-thirds vote. Is that because of the Article 97?
Article 97, yes.
And my next clarification is about Article 97. So this has never been protected by Article 97? Or, I think some people find this surprising that our park space is not protected.
It's extremely surprising. We sat on the Park and Rec Commission. The idea, the assumption was that all, many of our parks were under Article 97. And this came to light in, as I understand it, fairly recently, that Lars Anderson was not under Article 97 designation. And it should be.
I think, as I understand it, it's that, given recent case law, Article 97 does not necessarily offer the protections that people thought it did. I think the property is under Article 97. I just think that from a legal perspective, given this recent case law, a couple of cases, that Article 97 isn't quite as built and suspended as people thought.
Well, that's a terribly confusing response.
I think I alluded to that in my presentation, that there are ways to get around Article 97. It's just arduous and it takes more effort to do it.
Well, that was my understanding of 97, that it's not absolutely chiseled and stoned, but it's great protection. And my question is this. I mean, if this were protected by Article 97 as we had thought it were, then the consideration for a location of a school or any other purpose for this would not even be under consideration.
Exactly.
Is that correct? And it's only because of the fact that it's not protected as we thought it was that it now becomes vulnerable, which is what happens with open space. You lose it, you don't get it back. You have this kind of erosion. So I guess my question is, you know, why do we consider it okay to erode away at this kind of precious open space for laudable purposes, but purposes that can certainly be accommodated in other parts of town and leave our central park alone? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So I think the point is that no one is suggesting that it be eroded. Okay? There's no one saying that property should be taken. What people are saying is that there is a process being undertaken in town right now to look at all of our assets and to essentially arbitrarily take one off the table at this point in time is, at least to the folks on the advisory committee, poor public policy.
I just, I take exception to the use of arbitrary. I mean, just what Don said, that we've lived under the assumption, as a Park and Rec Commissioner, that many of our properties were under Article 97. And it's, that is a kind of underlying assumption about the quality of the park and how much people love it and want to protect it. And I do think that studies are valuable. I think they're important. But to have a property of this stature being under deliberation for a facility study, to me, I think we need to make an exception for Lars Anderson Park, for this proposed facility study. That we really need to get straight, that Lars Anderson Park is what it is and we want to see it as it is today. As, you know, 80 years we've been working on this, and there have been some mistakes. And we've seen them, and there are evidence. But we live with them and we want to move forward as trustees of public space. We are the trustees of our public open space, open to all. And we have an important mission here.
Alyssa Jonas. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 16. I'm on the advisory committee. I'm not sure I have so much of a question, but I do have a comment. I wasn't on the advisory committee, I wasn't there on the day that the advisory committee voted. I assumed that we were going to want to protect this valuable piece of property, so I wasn't there to vote to protect it. And I'm very confused why we're saying, let's change, don't change the status quo. The status quo is, it's a park. The status quo that we had believed, I had filed legislation to try to protect the golf course when there was talk about developing it, to get protection to Article 97. We had assumed that all open, all public parks were already under Article 97 protection. So I retracted that one article. So our assumption in this town has been we are protected by Article 97. And it is not such a, if we do not protect this property under Article 97, what's going to happen is, the Civic MOX presentation that I was at, first, the discussion that we had at the advisory committee, it started off that we could have the school. Well, you know, maybe we need a, we do, maybe we need a second high school, so maybe we should put that on as well. Oh, and we haven't counted the parking that we would need because, as you say, no one can get to that location without cars, so we have to add for parking. And that is how we erode it, we could potentially erode it by bit. So I think getting that protection is vital.
Is there a question?
I said there wasn't really a question, but respond to whatever I said.
I'm G. What's he saying?
Well, you know. Yeah, I think it's important to respond. I think the Parks and Recreation Commission does have a responsibility and should view itself as the protectors of our park space. That's absolutely their charge. It is the responsibility of other folks in town to take a more holistic perspective on things. And as I said earlier, I personally hope nothing happens here. You know, that, I don't want anything to happen, but I don't think that's really the issue. I think the issue is that the town is facing, you know, some real challenges. And as I said at the advisory committee, it is extremely ironic that I'm sitting here talking about doing things on behalf of the schools, having been on the override study committee and being the treasurer of the no override campaign. But I do think that we need to ensure that we don't paint ourselves into a corner that could result in a financial obligation to the town that might call into question the statement that, you know, a piece of property is priceless. There are limits in terms of what people can accept. And again, while I hope nothing happens here, to suggest that we not consider every option at our disposal, given the challenges we're facing, to me is poor public policy.
Well, I think we need some emotional intelligence intersected into this discussion. Because from a pragmatic standpoint, yes, we have to solve the school crisis. It's upon us. It's no question. But to jeopardize Lars Anderson Park and to sacrifice it at this point is a false economy in the long run. The people who have been taking care of this park for 80 years want to see it stay basically as it is in a certain framework and not transformed into a parking lot and into a high school. I just can't see it happening. There's some emotional intelligence that needs to go into planning. I've sat through many park review sessions with the Park and Rec Commission, and I have a lot of experience understanding how parks get shaped and how we have to make some compromises. But this is a big issue. It's like a referendum, in a way, on Lars Anderson Park. I mean, when it comes down to it, isn't this going to be a referendum on Lars Anderson Park? Because if we open the door to saying, oh, well, what could it be? It's just on a list, and we're desperate, and we have to make expedient, fast decisions because this is rushing at us of the school crisis, we are not trustees of the public open space. We are making a decision that we would regret in many, many ways.
I need, I'm sorry, I need to take exception to the, I'm sorry, to the suggestion that people are rushing into anything, okay? To suggest that there's a planning process that goes on in town that has been described and to reach the conclusion that anyone is suggesting or rushing towards a preconceived conclusion is, you know, it's just inappropriate.
I guess I need more explanation than that. What's inappropriate about it?
It's not true. It's inappropriate to suggest that.
And this will be the last question, and then we'll move on to closing remarks.
Jean Stringham, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. So, this is totally confusing now. What I want to say actually is a question, which I think the whole thing has to do with, there's an elephant in the room. And the people who are against this warrant article, which makes obvious sense to me, protect the park, gain up to $400,000 to fix it. That's obviously simple to me. But people are turning into pretzels and contorting themselves to make it more complicated because I think the elephant in the room is putting a high school at the top of the park or where the playing field is. And I think no one's saying that. So we're having fights about things that don't make any sense because there's an under-the-radar hidden agenda. And I think, you know, turning this whole thing into, is this poor planning? Is this good planning? What are we doing? It's just confusing the issue. I think it's very simple. Protect the park and fix the park. So, thank you.
Is there one more question? Yes? Okay. One last question.
My name is Rob Davies. I'm Precinct 5. Anyway, I just, I was at the park when, a couple weeks ago, when there was that lunar eclipse, and the place was filled with people when the sun came, when the moon came up and also later on in the evening. It's a special place. It's a large parcel. There aren't parcels like this. It has special meaning for our environment in terms of stormwater storage and stopping the urban heat island effect. And I just think that, you know, the comments that we were surprised that this wasn't protected by Article 97 is true for all our parks. In fact, most of our parks are, in fact, zoned in the kind of neighborhoods that they are. They could be zoned multifamily. And so I think we need to recognize that this is important, do what we thought, give it the protection that we thought it had, and use this as an opportunity to show how much we value our open spaces.
All right. So why don't we move to, yeah, right. We'll move on to closing remarks.
Do you have a question?
If it's a question, we'll take a question.
I'll try and make it a question. I'm Arlene Madison, Brookline Green Space Alliance. Lars Anderson Park is a park. It's been used as a park. It's been maintained as a park for onwards of 60 years. Cliff referred to two new parks in Brookline. Those parks are meeting deficits in our parkland that were sorely needed, especially in terms of playing fields for our children. And increase in child population means increase in need of open space as well as other facilities, including schools. So I guess it's more a comment about Article 97. Article 9, I agree that Lars Anderson Park should be part of a facility study, but Article 97 won't stop that. What Article 97 says is that special care should be taken before parkland is given up, that a two-thirds vote is required because we should give very special thought to the thought of losing parkland because usually, once developed, parkland is gone. So, yes, the study should go ahead. And yes, if it's deemed that, in this town's wisdom, that Lars Anderson Park needs to be used for another use, we shouldn't do it lightly. We should have that extra layer of protection of Article 97. And I would just ask if the advisory committee's wisdom was that Article 97 is a bad thing to have for public parkland.
Thank you, Cliff.
Sure. Well, the short answer to that question is no. Article 97 is not a bad thing. On the other hand, this property is currently, you know, has restrictions on its use from the deed of gift, okay? And there are three uses that are allowed right now. Charitable, educational, recreational. Let me, let me, go ahead. Clarify yourself.
There's education, and there's education, there's environmental education.
But that, I, the point is that that's, those are the uses that are allowed, okay? Article 97, if there was a determination that it made sense to do something here, you know, it's not, it's not something that the town itself can do by itself. It has to go to the legislature, okay? And that is a multi-year process. And essentially, the ability to do anything is more or less taken out of our hands. So even if we thought there was a compelling reason to do it, you know, if people on the legislature didn't, then, you know, we couldn't do anything about it. Thank you. The real issue here for the advisory committee is very, I'm going to sound like a broken record, okay? No one wants anything different, okay? But everyone who voted, you know, no action for this article feels that, given everything that's going on in town right now and given everything that we are involved with, to essentially take an asset off the table and not let other people take assets off the table that they may want to is inappropriate. It's bad public policy to essentially do that at this point in time. It's bad public policy to essentially do that at this point in time.
Okay, we'll move on to closing remarks. Cliff, would you like to?
I probably just made them.
Yeah.
You know, when I made my comments at the advisory committee and at the subcommittee, you know, I said that this was a heart and head decision, okay? That certainly in my heart, you know, I've spent a lot of time at Lars Anderson, myself, with my kids, when they were young, you know, kite flying, frisbee playing, you know, my son ran cross-country, you know, I love the park. I do. Okay, so, you know, my heart tells me I don't want anything there. You know, I don't, I don't want a second high school there. I don't think we need a second high school, okay? Personally, all right, you know, I, my graduating class had 1,000 kids in it, you know, in high school. I don't, I don't want a K-8, K-8 school there either. I don't want any of that to happen. And I don't necessarily think that it would happen. I don't. Because as part of this process that we're talking about, it is more likely than not that people will reach the conclusions that you're reaching here, that we're all kind of want to reach. But the fact is that we are in the middle of a process. It's, the process has been funded by town meeting. It's an inclusive process, looking at everything in the town. To take something out right now, no matter what you think about it, is just, you know, that's a heart decision. The head decision says, you know, from a governance perspective, that you need to put your heart aside and let the process play out. And that's all the advisory committee is saying. It's not saying we should do anything here. It's not saying it supports anything that's being done here. It's not a referendum. If we're a referendum, you'd be taking it to a vote of the populace. Okay, we're not doing that, okay? It's just basically saying, let the process, the planning process that we're going through right now, play itself out. That's all we're saying. Thank you.
We're running late and I've already made many of the points that I've hoped to make and that many of you eloquent people who support Lars Anderson Park as it is have made tonight. I know that others who are supporting Lars Anderson Park as it is tonight. For example, the Green Caucus has endorsed keeping Lars Anderson Park as it is through Article 97 designation. PAX has endorsed keeping Lars Anderson Park as it is under, if we enact Article 97 legislation. The Green Space Alliance, as I understand it, is in support of that. And there are hundreds and thousands of individuals for whom the heart does take precedence in this particular instance. I think there are exceptions to public policy. My daughter-in-law and my, is working in public policy and in fiscal literacy for underprivileged people. And my son is working for, in policy. Their policy rocks. We talk policy when we get together. Policy counts and direction counts, but when it comes down to it, it's the quality of life. And the importance that Lars Anderson can play and the quality of life is Brookline is irreplaceable. And once you start to open it up to a process of the kind of confusing, well, we think it, you know, it's a really great place and I personally don't want to touch it, but we should advocate it for, you know, the sake of good public policy, I think is a flawed reasoning, particularly in this amazing community of Brookline. And for the people who have fought so hard to get so far with Lars Anderson Park and for Aaron Gallantyne, who has worked tirelessly and such a visionary and such an incredible public servant, to prefer a $400,000 grant and be told by the advisory committee that that's chump change when we're arguing over $10 sometimes at town meeting, it seems. I find it rudderless. That I think we need a rudder in the water and I think that water rudder needs to say that Lars Anderson Park is off limits for a high school and that Lars Anderson Park is a priceless treasure that we should not play with.
Thank you. Thanks to both presenters. I'd like to thank the speakers, the TMMA, the moderator, Margaret Bush, the League of Women Voters of Brookline, the people who asked questions, everybody for attending. We really appreciate it. I think it was a great night, learned a lot. And we'll see what happens at town meeting. Thank you.